Before we go into the road call and everything, I want to say something that's been brought up to me about some other things that's going on. We are not negotiating or selling the water. This has been brought up by other people in the city and other media outlets out of town. I want to say that we're not associated with Oneida. And Oneida has no say on what we say over here. In one of their media reports, they said that we were still negotiating with American Water, and that is wrong. It's fine with me, and if they know I'm saying this, it's fine. But this is wrong. We are not. Nothing's been done. Nothing's been said. No papers have transferred hands. So I want to get that out in the open first thing. There's no plans on selling the water plant or the water system at all. So I just wanted to make that upfront. It's first in the meeting, it way everybody knows. But a lot of the run and mills going wild with it, saying we're doing this, we're doing that. We're not. And so, like I say, other media sources and social media has been saying it too. But just be careful who you listen to.
Sir?
Yes?
If I could, I would like to put the rumor now to rest.
Right.
And considering all the harm that can be done by selling our water
That's the reason it was... Well, that's the reason it was... We, like I do with everybody, anybody comes up here wants to say anything, I listened to her speech, but they didn't impress me. I brought it to the board, apparently it didn't impress the board either. So it's over, and there's nobody's done anything. But like I say, when you got other sources saying that we're... That Oneida's saying that we're doing it because Oneida didn't do it, because Oneida didn't do it, because they knew the same thing. So I'm just saying, I wanted... I'm just making a statement now, out in the open, at the public meeting where everybody can know, nobody's selling the water, everything's fine, and it's not even being considered now.
So you can affirm for the record
Yes.
that our water will not be sold to a private organization?
Aye.
Is the whole organization in approving that?
I will not vote to sell the water to a private entity.
Nothing has been discussed with me, one way or the other. I did not know that it was totally off the table.
Because they've not even sent us anything?
It would be not... You need to inform us what the process... I didn't know that.
Ms. Baker?
No. No. They didn't ever pursue it any further, and all we had was a presentation.
Right.
They never even made an offer.
Right.
There was nothing to even decide on.
Because they've not said anything, it's been over 90 days.
So if you got something back from them, then it's no.
Thank you very much for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
And putting it out officially and putting it to rest. Thank you.
That's what I wanted to do, because I was... Last night I had some people call me, and then they told me it was on Facebook, and I looked at it, and I said right then, I'm gonna make a statement to this meeting in front of TV and the press and everything, and let them know what's going on.
That's very much appreciated.
Very much appreciated. We'd be glad to share that in our own social media, that you have confirmed that it is not for sale.
All right. Now, like a welcome to everybody. And call the roll, please.
Charles Cooper.
Here.
Nikki Duncan.
Here.
Vanessa Matthews. Ginny Ledbetter here. And Elizabeth is not here.
She's at a conference? All right. Approval of amendments to the regular meeting for August 2, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
A motion to approve by Ms. Ledbetter. Any discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Duncan. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Nikki Duncan.
Four.
Ginny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
All right. Do you have any grievance from citizens or anything from anybody in the audience? If not, we go to the mayor report. We went back on the 3rd of September, we went to Cookville for the grant for the splash pad. We had to go to another class. They're saying that we'll be signing the contract very soon. Hopefully, we'll get that started very soon. Meeting with FAA, the 12th here Thursday, at the airport to talk about the papers, hopefully get some signing and contracts and all that stuff, and get that progress on the thing. Also, I'm going to Rome State on September the 8th. Senator Ken Yeager's having a grant conference there. He invited me to come to see what kind of grants we could get for the city of Jamestown. Also, October 4th, I'm going to Chattanooga for certified local government training to get... Try to get some more grants for downtown, work on downtown, getting some things done there. Downtown's very important to me, and I want to build downtown up as best we can. And if I can get some things to help the businesses downtown, to fix their buildings up and stuff, that's what I'm gonna try to do. So that's the main thing that I want to try to do. And that's about it for me. So now we go to the city engineer report.
Just a couple of things following up from our work session. The main pump station project temporary emergency repairs are in process. The equipment is being fabricated as we speak, so we should see some work to get going on that over the next couple of weeks. The T-Dot projects, Highway 127, what I would call the utility relocation or the work associated with that highway project that's been going on for about 10 years, and it's still moving forward. So I anticipate that the... Maybe talking to the board hopefully soon about the betterment that we talked before about the exercising of that foreing to maintenance. So we're still waiting on the state to present a contract to the city for that. The second phase of that project is in this case released this summer in Rod Oakley drawing. So that would be a bigger part of it, which would be going from Little Road all the way to Parkland High School. So I'll keep you posted as we get more information on that. I guess in light of the discussions related to the water system, it probably would behoove us to have some continued dialogue about the water plant. So I would be... Whatever y'all want from me, I'm available. Just let me know. I just wanted to kind of see that in your mind, that we should probably talk about where we left off. Talk about funding, grant opportunities, and some of those things in the very near future. So, mayor, however you'd like to do that, just let me know. Just wanted to kind of throw that in your mind, and I'm available. We talked about kind of going through the presentation again for those that haven't seen it. I'll be glad to do that if you request, and then we can meet collectively as a group if you'd like to talk more about what a strategy we're moving forward with that project.
That's one thing. Senator Yeager said we might be able to do some grants with. And he was... Because I talked to one of his people, and he said that there probably might be some grant money in there for the water plant. So she told me be sure to be there.
Our city engineer begged for quite some time to... He knows how serious that is. We do need to move forward with that.
Yes, that's the reason we're trying to... I'm trying to get some funding ahead and try to get something done here. And we talked to Ms. Amanda about it, and she's looking too. But I want to go to that grant conference at Rome State to see what we can get for the water. All right. City building inspector report.
Well, we just completed two more of the houses finalized that were done through the grant section. This place has really turned out well. They really work well. And I'm expanding the database on my system. I'm including the model numbers from all of their model numbers and serial numbers from any of their equipment, like their HVAC systems. Anything that they get like that's going on a database that I'm keeping records of. I also wanted to get y'all's thoughts on maybe looking at the possibility. I purchased a program that basically has interactive internet access where you can fill out your applications online. Now, not exactly sure how it worked out, how to work that in with the city system on their internet service. I'll probably have to get their IT guy on that. If y'all want me to proceed on this, just, you know, can you kind of affirmative or negative, and I'll continue to work on it. But what I'd like to do is set it up where, if nothing else, I'd like to kind of modify some of these applications that we have, some of the permit applications, make them more relevant to what we do here. Okay, in other words, customize them, and then have them either... And I don't think that the... It's a good idea to necessarily make them or to have them able to pay for it online, because if they change their mind or something of that nature, then it might change, you know? And I don't want to fix it where they can pay for it online. They still have plenty of people. But I'd like for them to be able to fill it out online and then print themselves off a copy, bring it up, hand it up here to the girls, and have their feet in. So if y'all want me to continue with this, mayor may...
I think we need to get 21st Century, that's what I think we need to do.
Did we have somebody updating our website?
Yes.
Okay.
Who's updating the websites right now? Who takes care of that?
I've been updating them, plus our IT guys helping too.
I'll get with you on this program that I'm working on.
I've been updating some of the things that we've been doing and stuff, and on the website, so trying to get it updated, and so...
Now, we still have people that's gonna come in and want to get theirs to the office. That's not an issue. That's still a viable option for them. But for others who are out of town, that, you know, maybe have people working in this area, they can... They'll be able to purchase their license to work inside the city, because we still have people coming in and working that aren't even aware that they have to have a license to work inside the city. But this is making available to them, making them know that they had to do this before they come in here and work, and be able to print their permits out, or fill them out, print them out, and then bring them in and give them to the city.
That's great.
All right, thank you, Mr. South. Mr. Allred, city attorney report.
All right, for me this month, I've provided you guys with a contract that I put together between the city of Jamestown and Feathers County Board of Education. We're approached on track, just that addresses the clarification of the potential new access driveway for Pine Haven School. So you guys have that before you. And then also, the mayor has asked me to add a few extra clauses. Spoke with him, and he has been working on a few extra things for the policies and procedures. He wanted me to add a couple of things in for that, so I've been working on that as well. It's pretty much it for this month.
We expect policies and procedures, maybe job descriptions next month?
Yeah, I mean, to a degree, the job descriptions are not within my... I mean, I can provide the... I can do them if you want me to, but we weren't together on that.
Okay.
Just put it in the format that I provide.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't provided a format per se, but I can.
Okay, thank you.
You said a lot of work for you?
No.
Okay, now we go to old business, approval of the street paving bid for $186,673.75. This project will be from where the state stopped at the courthouse at 52, all the way to the city limits top. That whole main street will be done.
I have a question about the amount of pavement. Who am I speaking to? Who's on the road? The amount of pavement that will be put down on the road, because what's going down on the bypass
No.
is not acceptable as far as I'm concerned.
The people that done the bypass is not doing this.
Okay.
Yes, because we...
We know we're gonna get more pavement.
Yeah, that's a different... Yeah, that's micro-surfacing.
Yes, we're not doing micro-surfacing.
Okay.
I've got an email from the DOT, I think it was last Thursday or something. There's one more project they're gonna do like that in Feathers County, and it's probably... It's not funded yet, but it's gonna be here. Part of it's gonna be almost in the city limits and going at 154. So... But that's not funded or nothing, but that's the only project they have. But we're not getting into micro-surfacing here in town.
No.
All right, I need a motion to approve the street paving bid.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Ms. Ledbetter. Any more discussion? If not, can I have a second, please?
I'll take it.
Seconded by Mr. Cooper. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Nikki Duncan.
Four.
Ginny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
All four.
Number two is approval of the 60-day emergency hire of Dwayne Beatty to full-time position at the sewer plant.
I make a motion to arm.
Motion made by Mr. Cooper. Any more discussion? If not, can I have a second, please? One more time, do I have a second? Motion failed. Moving on to new business. Request to merge the street department and parking and wreck department with Steve Brown as supervisor overall. I need a motion.
Can I make that motion?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second it.
Ms. Matthews made the motion?
To merge the street department, wreck department.
Okay, and Ms. Ledbetter seconded. Any more discussion before we vote?
We need to add to the agenda to change his pay, and...
Can we do it in the same motion, Mr. Attorney?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so you want to state that in your...
Based on...
In your motion?
Yes, based on what we discussed
Yes.
in the working meeting, yes.
Okay, and you just... And you do the same thing, Ms. Ledbetter? You second the same thing?
I second the same thing.
All right.
Making his pay.
Any more discussion?
We were going to set his pay at 20 an hour, if that is successful to him.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, need a roll call, please.
Charles Cooper. Nikki Duncan.
Four.
Ginny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
All four, and then just one.
Number two, request to advertise for applications for the street department, two positions. These will be a labor physician.
I make the motion.
Motion made by Ms. Ledbetter. Any discussion? If not, do I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Duncan. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Nikki Duncan.
Four.
Ginny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
All four, and then just one.
I had $190,000 there when I brought it over from when we were redoing and everything. It came over as 19. So the extra money that we had on the bonds that I had in the bonds this time, that's where I took the money from to put it where it's for the electric bill there at the water plant.
So that meant that the monies came from... It was... You just had extra money in the bonds?
Mm-hmm. I had the extra... I had extra money in the bonds when we were doing that footwork.
Do we have a process in place for this, that? We had a lot of errors that we had to correct in this process. Can we get to a point where we have some kind of stopgap so that we don't have that? By the time it gets to us, maybe Carolyn reviews, you know, because she's probably gonna catch on or something, before it comes to the council, okay, so that we're not having to correct the record before, you know? Just try to get that a little bit more clean, okay?
Do we have a motion to approve the amendment as it stands right now?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Ms. Matthews. Any more discussion? Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Ledbetter. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Nikki Duncan.
Four.
Ginny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
All four, and then just one.
Approval for the quote for the backhoe for the water department. As we said... There it is. The backhoe is a Case 5A SN, four-wheel drive. The total came in at $99,787. It lists for 165. We first got the first quote, it was over 100,000, and now he dropped it down to 99. So it also has a one-year premier warranty and two years or 2,000-hour higher train warranty.
I make the motion to approve the quote for backhoe for the water department.
Motion made by Ms. Ledbetter. Any more discussion? If not, can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Duncan.
What's the delivery timeframe of that?
Uh, I believe around two weeks.
Two weeks?
I'm not... Don't hold me to that. That's just what I'm thinking it could be. And it comes from Lewisville, Irmerable, same thing, so... All right, roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Nikki Duncan.
Four.
Ginny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
All four, and then just one.
Number five, approve... Approval of monthly bills for August 2, 2019.
I have some issues with this stuff coming down lately. Uh, questions? I mean, you know, I'm sure it's just me, but I've got some questions. I thought we agreed that overtime would be flexed off, and it's not being flexed off. Can you tell me why? We've got... I mean, have we had something going on that I don't know about? That we've got overtime, like we were using it?
I mean, we've been... All of us has been trying to... Are you a certain department? There's more than one department that's got quite a bit of overtime. Their percentage has been used up already. Let's see if I can find it. Where's it at?
You're talking about this budget salary?
Budget salary.
Budget report gives you all of overtime.
Um, overtime wages for city records is already used up 66.42%.
No, that's what's left.
That's what's left.
Yeah, that's what's left.
Yeah, that's all that's left.
Yeah.
And to me, that sounds like there's all enough left at this rate. There's something going on that we need to know about. Is... Are you overworked? Do you need help? What's going on?
I mean, we just... That was just where we were working on the budgets, and then we had... Where I was here, when people... When...
You're not... You're talking about me? Yeah, but you're not paid after the budget. This is after the budget.
From July on is what I'm talking about, just because we... The 1st of July, the 17th of July.
Okay.
And then, of course, just...
And we have not figured out a way to flex that off.
Yeah, I mean, we... Yeah, I mean, there's time that's not on there. I mean, that I traded out, yes, and then...
Where is Michelle on here?
She should be...
She is in...
City court?
Water.
See, it's... Because you're... You are... Are you Gail and Carolyn taking out three departments? So it's that times three.
Is it correct in repair and maintenance? Let's see. No, that's not all the time. Public Works only have 58.27% left?
What page is that?
319.
Now, they... He usually... Steve's usually with them when they have water breaks and...
Have we had a lot of water breaks?
Yes, we have.
That's what's happening.
Main sewer that broke last week, we just worked on it, and we'll do that.
And we had to go in and get it fixed, because we didn't... We just want to get the fines without way of overtime.
What do we do to... Are we gonna have to do a budget amendment to get them funds?
I mean, all the guys know unless it's emergency.
Right.
And then we've been trying up here too, as far as, like I said, I've been switching mine out.
Overtime wages for recreation is down to 61.32%.
Yeah, he can answer that, because he's switched his... He's been switching his around too.
Customer accounting collection, is that Michelle?
That's Mr. Darlene.
Is that... Michelle is...
In the water.
Water.
Yeah.
Is she just water?
No.
Water and gas, okay.
Michelle's is a percentage of water and gas, I think.
Under customer accounting and collection. Who comes out of that?
Accounting and collection.
Ms. Darlene and...
Michelle?
Michelle and Brittany, a percentage of Brittany's pays out of there.
So they all three come out of both gas and water area?
Right.
Well, I think Michelle's... I want to make sure. I think Michelle's is underwater. I think Brittany's maybe under gas, and her percentage... Because Brittany has a percentage count at like a 13%? I can't remember, 16% that comes from the port hurt.
Okay, does Brittany do water and gas?
So, and it may be... It may be broke up, but I didn't think there's was that broke up in there, which I don't think is from them, so...
Is there any better way to show us who's there? Who's... I mean, that's hard to...
Who's in most... In each department?
No, in... Yes, because...
What department are getting paid through, right?
In the percentage.
Yeah, where they're getting paid from.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we should be able to do that, yeah.
Which would only be Gail, Carolyn, Michelle, the clerk, the office.
Only the office. So transmission and collection is down to 51%, so we may have to do something about that, right?
Well, that's one of those, though, with water. I mean, you know, it's just...
But water and gas, it's...
And the winter's coming up.
Water and gas is a big one. No matter what happens, you can sit here and plan it. You think you've got the perfect plan, and it will never come through. So... But it's like Jonathan didn't work 22 hours on that, then we had water leaks this morning, and then you had...
Also had a water leak last week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they've been doing that, and you have to fix them. I mean, there is no other way.
There's no other way.
Yeah.
It's just, what, corroding pipe, old pipes?
Well, it's like over with the pipe we had that took the 22 hours, it was buried what?
20 foot.
20 foot deep. We had to dig all that out, and then we had...
And solid rock.
Yeah. We even found dynamite wire everywhere they blasted it for dinner, but it was just something... It took the time to dig it out, and so... And it's just crazy with some of this stuff. And in the wintertime, you're gonna have a problem with water too. Usually that's when the water really bad breaks, is in the wintertime, not in the summer. This year, for some reason, Jonathan, in the sense of this, we've had more water breaks this summer for some reason. We don't know why.
Wait till we're fixing all this pipe. Which if we're fixing all this pipe, maybe then we'll break in the wind.
Right. And that's, we're hoping anyway, we're hoping.
That's the hope.
Yeah.
That's the hope. Um, I, I, a statement, I, I just make a statement on it, if we can at all, because we did budget for the races, we're trying to pay people fair. We don't want to get into trouble on overtime wages if we don't have to. Um, we need to try to get a handle on that when one of our department heads to get the handle on that, if it possible. I understand emergencies, that's not what I'm talking about, but, uh, we wanna stay in budget. I also have a question, what is the credit card use policy? Who has it?
I have one, uh, you have one, and who, and who else? Steve?
She want the policy or the horse?
I, I wanna know what the policy is, I mean, we do have a policy in place, right? Um, we have checks and balances.
Yes.
So, what happened at the county's not gonna happen here.
Right.
No, there's four.
There's four eyes that go on everything that comes through here. It starts out with Carolyn, and then Michelle, then me, then Gail. All four of us have to see everything that go, ever, usually it's every Wednesday or Thursday, I have a stack that I read everyone, I initial everyone.
Okay.
But Carolyn initials it, then Michelle initials it, then I initials it, and then Gail initials it, then we have to go through the, uh, computers and approve it there. So, everything that comes through has to be approved, and four, a set of eyes has to see it before it gets done.
And, but...
Before they even, checks are even written, and so...
That's a, that's a good process. Policy is that we do not use these, uh, credit cards for the city for personal use.
Right, we don't.
Period.
And every time that somebody uses this, they have to bring a receipt, and it has to be signed with their name. Because like if I go and get something we need or something, and I get, like the street signs that I get, I get the bill, I sign it, I give it to Michelle, Michelle gives it to Carolyn, and it goes through the whole process, and then that's what it is. But every, every time that you have a credit card, if you have a receipt, you have to sign it. That's the thing, that I do the same thing. I've got one that I take, but I very seldom try not to, I don't wanna use it. I use, a lot of times I use my own money, like to, if I eat or something, I just use my own money. But I want, I want that name on that receipt, and that's what we've been doing, so.
And, and we have the same type of process in place for checks? Not one person's over?
No.
At all?
All, like we talked about before, every time a check comes through, it has to be approved through the four eyes, and then when the checks are printed, I have to sign them, and Gail has to sign them before they're approved, and there's nobody else that can do it, just us two.
Okay.
That's the reason we try to keep this process in place, that's what, we have our, our weekly schedule, that's what I, my weekly schedule is signing, I know my days I have to sign.
So, as an example, reimbursement for pool supplies, Teresa Warner, is that her personal card? Or is that, that would be her personal card?
Is that what she did, Steve?
That was a slip-up, and she had went and bought some, uh, uh, blocks for the pool on the weekend, couldn't get access to the card, so she went and got it herself, and we had to do reimbursement.
So, she used her personal card?
Yeah, yeah. But sometimes that does happen, you know, some kind of emergency, something like that.
As long as they're not using the city card anyway, that's fine.
Right, right, right. And you can ask the girls up front, and Carolyn's, Carolyn's taught me well, that I'm really got particular on this stuff, I really have.
Anytime the pool people use the Walmart card or something, I check and make sure that everything is, uh, unloaded, I check it off as it's unloaded, and I put it all on pay up.
So, you just give them a card? You do not do the purchasing, they do?
They'll go do the purchasing, when they get back, they'll holler at me, and I'll come back and I'll check everything off.
And everything that, on the receipt has to be checked, that's, even when I buy, buy stuff. If I have to use the Walmart card, everything comes through, or somebody in this building has to check it off, I'm not going to, I have to sign it, I have to sign it and everything. So, everything's always checked off before it's, well, usually if we unload it, or it's checked off as it comes in the building.
Okay.
All right, now, do we have a motion to approve the monthly bills for two thousand, uh, two thousand and nineteen August?
I make the motion to approve bills?
Motion made by Ms. Matthews, any more discussion?
Would you like a minute?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Five hundred and thirty-two thousand, ninety-eight dollars and two cents.
Okay, sorry. Now, can I have a second, please?
I'll, um, I'll second, on the condition, Gail, you're going to give me that Amazon, yes?
Yeah.
Question that I have, yes.
All right. Motion made by Ms. Ledbetter. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jeanne Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
All four, none against one.
All right, number six, approval of monthly financials for the August two thousand and nineteen. Excuse me.
General fund, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. Water and sewer fund, one million, one hundred and sixty, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighteen cents. Natural gas fund, one million, six hundred and one, two hundred and forty-four and fifty-six cents, with a total of three million, ninety-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and nineteen cents.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Duncan, any more discussion? If not, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Ledbetter. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jeanne Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
All four, none against.
We need a motion for this to be wrote.
We need a motion to add that to the agenda.
I need a motion to add to the agenda ordinance eighteen fifty, ordinance admitting the title twelve and municipal code of the City of Jamestown, Tennessee.
So, I think you've clarified that. Okay, I make a motion to approve ordinance eighteen fifty.
We're gonna add it to the agenda now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I make a motion to add it to the agenda and approve it.
Okay.
No.
Any more discussion? If not, can I have a second, please?
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Ledbetter. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jeanne Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
All four, none against one.
Now, do I have a motion to approve ordinance eighteen fifty?
Make the motion to approve.
Ms. Matthews makes the motion, any more discussion? If not, can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Ledbetter. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jeanne Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
All four, none against one.
Make a motion to add the road construction agreement to the agenda?
Yes. Motion made by Ms. Ledbetter to add the road construction agreement with the City of Jamestown with the Board of Education.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Matthews.